So let's go on to the first item on the agenda, which is budget items. Ms. Bauer or Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and get started with these?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. So what we have before the council.
All right, Duncan has joined us.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you.
Good. All right, we've got everyone here. So council, we have the documents for the council's consideration on the next regular meeting on the 22nd, and those would include the budget ordinance, the CIP ordinance, the tax rate ordinance, and the stormwater fee ordinance. And what we'd like to spend our, the initial time with council is to provide you an overview of the capital improvements program, and we've got a number of slides that we would be sharing, if we could share them. I'm going to email those out to city council, and I think they will be visible to, actually, I guess if we're sharing, then we don't get audio. So I think Cindy, what we'll do then is just get a briefing from you on the highlights of the CIP, and not go through the full slide deck, but maybe just refer specifically to the projects that are funded in FY22, and an overview of kind of the big picture for the six-year CIP. Shall we handle it that way? Cindy, can you hear me? I apologize, but we're not able to hear you on audio. So what I'm going to suggest is that you come up and use my computer. In the meantime, Ms. Bauer will guide the council through the budget documents, and allow you to have an opportunity to get reset up at a workstation with audio. So Ms. Bauer, if you could just take this moment to give the council a briefing on the budget documents that will be before the council at your next meeting on the 22nd.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We have for you four ordinances today. The first one is the proposed budget. As the city manager presented the fiscal year 2022 budget on March 8th, 116.0 million budget with a 1 cent real estate tax rate decrease, which includes funding for the schools, and at a 2.5% increase, a 2.3% increase in funding for city operations, the general government, and allocates appropriate funds, 100,000 for affordable housing, 200,000 for COVID contingency, and use of permit reserves in the amount of 448,000 for a couple of positions, three positions, and 100,000 in contract for inspections, and 6.27 million in transfer to capital reserves for the founders' VCs, as well as the second payment of the, from the developer on the West Falls Church campus project. There are a lot of initiatives that are funded and with reprogramming of funds, and as well as the new funding that has been due to the reassessment growth rate, which addresses mobility and accessibility, public health and safety, inclusiveness and social sustainability, retaining small-town character in an urban setting, and responsive and accountable government. The CIP portion will be covered in the next presentation when the deputy city manager comes back. And we plan, we already had, as far as the public engagement, we already had a first budget town hall meeting last Thursday. The reading, the first reading of these board ordinances will be brought to council next Monday, March 22nd, with a follow-up work session on April 5th, and another budget hearing on April 12th, a second budget town hall meeting on April 15th at 7:30 PM, and with an anticipation of budget adoption on Monday, April 26th, council meeting. So that is the budget ordinance. We also have for you a second ordinance for the tax rate increase. And that proposes, one second, I'm just opening the documents. So the tax ordinance, the staff recommends advertising the current tax rate of 1.355 for $100 of assessed value of real estate. Advertise this and advertise their personal property and machinery and tools tax rates at the current rate of $5 per $100 of assessed value. The rates would be unchanged from fiscal year 2021. However, the city manager's budget that was presented on March 8th is balanced with a 1 cent tax rate decrease. It is, it is recommended that the tax rate, as we go through the budget hearings and deliberations and go through adoption, the tax rate can be, that is adopted, can be less than the rate that is advertised, but cannot be more than the rate that is advertised. So with that in mind, the staff recommends advertising 1.355 for $100 of assessed value. I'd like to note that each penny on the real estate tax rate generates approximately 452,000 in revenue for city and school operations, capital expenditures, and debt service. And that was the second ordinance. The third ordinance is stormwater billing rate ordinance. That one proposes a 2% increase in the stormwater fee. The rate increase will provide approximately 45,000 in additional revenues, which is, would be required to help meet the needs of the city's stormwater system. This is part of the study that was conducted, and this rate increase is proposed based on that to meet the construction of the six project area improvements that were recommended by the Stormwater Task Force for the six major flood mitigation projects, which are in the final engineering stage right now. And the construction begins soon on them. So that concludes the three ordinances. The fourth one is the one that is being handled by Ms. Mester. Would you like me to keep going, Mr. Shields, or is Ms. Mester coming back?
Hello, this is Cindy, and I'm currently on Wyatt's machine. Can you hear and see me, Karen?
Yes, I can.
All right, yes. There, we're still working on the other machines, so I just came and joined Mr. Shields. So my apologies that the technology didn't have my audio, and so I will quickly try to catch up what I was eloquently saying, and you all could not hear me. But the CIP is fully posted on the website, fallschurthva.gov/cip for the full documents, as well as all presentations to the planning commission, and this material tonight will be posted as well. The staff report that council has before you in your packet includes quite a few helpful attachments, and so I will refer to them, but not go through them in detail tonight since we don't have the video. The CIP that is before you, FY22 to 27, is a robust reinvestment into the city's infrastructure, and is building upon the work we've already been doing for facilities, parks, and transportation. It is a $97 million CIP. 15 million for general funds in schools, 60 million for transportation, so we're still leveraging grants. 15 million for sanitary sewer, and 7 million for stormwater. The CIP that Mr. Shields presented is consistent with the planning commission's adopted recommendations, which they did on February 17th. They adopted the CIP as had been presented by staff with a continued recommendation that we pursue the equity lens, which was piloted this year. Look to develop an environmental impact lens, as well as refining an operational cost calculator, which will allow us to make sure we're budgeting for the maintenance of projects as we develop those capital investments. So for things like if we ask where footage to facilities, are we adequately budgeting for custodial services? Or with more bus shelters, are we maintaining the cleaning, funding, and repairs? The city manager's proposed CIP did, is modified in two ways from the planning commission's recommendation, and this was positive. There was additional pay-go money that could be added to general government facilities in the amount of 75,000, and school facilities, 125,000. As it regards to the equity lens, I did want to highlight that for a moment. In the staff report, you have the full consolidated report of all assessments of the projects against the three questions built into the equity lens this year. And this was to give us an opportunity to normalize biases and bring to our consciousness any implicit biases, mitigate project delivery inequities, and create operational strategies to mitigate inequities across our community. The consolidated report, when we assessed all the project analysis, did indicate that we have appropriately planned for our investments, and it will guide our future planning efforts as well. As we go forward, we do look forward to refining the terms, ranking, benchmarks, and performance standards of our equity lens. And certainly, as we go through the budget process, welcome council's feedback, specific content, or how we can improve the diagnostic tool. This CIP is on our two-year even cycle, so new projects were added, and I'll highlight the four new projects that are in the CIP. You'll find in your staff report a lot of good resources, an updated snapshot on all projects as of January, a report card on how we're achieving comprehensive plan and area plans, as well as the transportation schedule, since that's a very robust and a lot of projects. It'll give you a sense of specific projects in the timeline. Also, you'll see in the presentation, when we posted on the website, links to good, two good maps that we have in the CIP. All the projects are posted, current ones and future planned ones, as well as the NTC, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Map, so you can drill down on specific projects. Now, as Mr. Shields indicated, since we can't do the full PowerPoint this evening, I'll highlight some of the key projects for you. There are four new projects in this year's CIP, as I mentioned. One is for public safety radios. They'll be End to Life and FY25, and so we've budgeted for funding to start replacing them, and that would be for police, sheriff, and public works. IT infrastructure, so that we can start investing more in the cybersecurity, firewalls, intrusion protection, those important things. Also, storage capacity, as we build on body-worn cameras, additional documents in our library, historical room, and also Wi-Fi. So a lot of investment over the six years for IT infrastructure. Also, synthetic turf, and I'll highlight that a little bit more. One of the other new projects that I wanted to highlight is Kaiser Parking Garage Elevator, and this is one that's proposed for FY27, and you'll note in the CIP it's currently unfunded. But we wanted to put in a placeholder as we start to refine this project so we could have a focus on doing a cost-benefit analysis, right place for parking, is it a good cost factor, but also an important legal review, because before we can put private, public money on private property, we need to have a formal agreement or some kind of site control. So this will allow time for staff to do some additional research, because it will indicate our interest in public parking. The CIP does also continue to reinvest in projects that we've been working on, on an ongoing basis. That would include Neighborhood Traffic Calming, NTC of 100,000 per year. We do have continuation of the streetlights and sidewalk program. This year, as council knows, FY21 is focused on streetlights, and going forward, we want to put that focus on sidewalks. And with the hiring of the transportation engineer that we hope will be in the near term, and this will be the filling of the position that Mr. Bradley vacated when he was promoted to our Public Works Director, will allow us to move a focus on to developing the sidewalk program, building on the good missing links database we have, and determining how to set up some prioritization and funding of those projects. The sidewalk program will also be, very importantly, influenced by the equity lens. We have applied for additional grants so that we can do pavement and traffic signals, and we have invested in the CIP for stormwater. 6.9 million is capital for flooding mitigation, and that is just the capital in Mr. Shields' budget. It's a larger amount because it included the operational and staffing. And of course, we're continuing to invest in sanitary sewer. The utilities for stormwater and sanitary is a $41 million total CIP reinvestment. For the sanitary sewers, Mr. Shields indicated on March 8th, there's no rate increase, but we are continuing to invest in treatment plan improvements, capacity expansion, although it's a lower dollar amount due to some additional technical analysis by staff to really align what our capacity needs are projected to be. And we will continue to invest in the rehabilitation of our infrastructure aging lines, both for relining them, but working on I and I. There's 1.5 million projected for the future CIP, the six-year period, and then there's also already 2 million that's being reinvested. Quick highlights on the stormwater, because you will have a more detailed work session on that with the task force. There is, in the CIP still, the continued commitment to the six priority projects recommended by the task force for water quantity addressing of issues. And then in the out year, projecting money for the recommendations that will come from your task force to focus on quality and continuing to implement the watershed management plan. For an overview of the general fund, which includes general and school funding, that portion of the six-year CIP is $15 million. It includes 2.9 for public safety, 900,000 for IT, 6.4 for facilities, and 4.7 for parks. On the park front, the FY23 CIP continues to have some funding for Fellows Park implementation, and this will be time to follow up with the current community engagement for master plan updates, and then the design work based on the adoption of the master plan. It also continues implementation and reinvestment of all of the park master plans at 1.85 million. Of that, 150,000 is from a voluntary concession. One of the new projects in this year's CIP is synthetic turf fields. As council knows, we have one at Larry Graves now, and the high school football field, and we will soon have one, the high school practice field. And so the CIP is proposing to budget 450,000 starting in FY26 to start the replacement of those fields, since they have a nine-to-10-year life cycle, and we want to have a field done every three years, so we get them in a staggered pattern. Currently, the CIP shows this is unfunded, but we wanted to go ahead and start the planning process so we can start looking at funding options towards that effort. General government facility highlights do include 1.75 million over this next six years. As Mr. Shields indicated, when he presented his budget, we've continued to keep our commitment with pay-go for facility reinvestment. Those 1.75 million will go for a planned effort to reinvest in all our facilities for roof, HVAC, and so forth. The CIP also includes for FY25, 750,000 that would go for facility security systems, and this is an integrated system with schools and all of our facilities over time. Currently, right now, City Hall has the card access and camera system. The library, when it's finished, will include it, and then we'll be able to expand. And as a final note for facility reinvestment on the general government side, we are continuing to reinvest in Fire Station 6, per the agreement with Arlington. As I mentioned, for schools for FY22, there is 125,000 for facility reinvestment, which will allow them to look at security vestibles, roof replacements, the high school stadium, sort of reinvesting in all the facilities. In the out years, it's showing as unfunded as we look through funding up options for a lot of these items that are smaller in nature. The schools were able to use the 390,000 that came from the revenue sharing in FY20 to also assist with facility reinvestment. The big school project in the CIP would be for TJ Elementary School, and that would be a total of 3.5 million, 1,026, and 2.5 million in '27. And this would help to address enrollment projections for an expansion, and also to work on core systems and building renovation and ADA for the sections of the building that were from 2012. As I mentioned at the start, the transportation is the largest portion of the CIP. Out of the 97 million for the six-year period, 60 million invests for transportation, which really is allowing us to implement the comprehensive plan chapter and the area plans related to transportation. You will note in the 10-year window, about 143 million targeted for transportation. Many of those in the out year are not funded yet, but it will allow us to refine the scope, the cost estimates, and build towards applying for additional grants. The grant, transportation does leverage a lot of grants. The CIP for six years has $46 million of grants, which is about a 1 to 6 ratio of leveraging and stretching the local money. Key transportation projects, there's three new ones in the near term for FY22. That would be Park Avenue-Great Street, which will allow us to reinvest from North Washington at the State Theater, all the way down to the library on Park Avenue, with streetscape, wider sidewalks, and most significantly, undergrounding utilities for ADA accessibility. We have, we will be implementing the NVTA grant for the West Falls Multimodal Access Area over by Shreve Road, and also grant funding for South Oak Street Bridge, which is structurally deficit and has a need for major repairs. The CIP in the presentation, when you have a chance to look at it, will show a lot of active projects, as Mr. Shields also mentioned during his presentation on the 8th. One of the transportation projects I did want to take a moment to highlight on is the LED streetlight conversion. This is one the council adopted for the current FY21 CIP. The implementation of it was delayed because of COVID. It was difficult to have in-person meetings and site tours for a while, but we have been able to switch over to virtual briefings for boards and commissions. And so we have briefed the planning commission twice, the Architectural Advisory Board, March 2020, and we'll have a meeting upcoming soon, ESC, CACT, and the EDA. All of this was important feedback that council requested that we obtain from boards and commissions. We also were in October able to go to a Dominion site to do a field's visit, to actually see the lights and so forth. So you'll see in the staff report, as well as in this PowerPoint, a synopsis of the six different lights that we're proposing to convert to LED, and where they would be placed, whether it's on our corridor. The majority of the parks will be the colonial style, except for Freddie Park, where we'll retain the Victorian look. The majority of the parks will be the colonial style, except for Freddie Park where we'll retain the Victorian look and the great streets. So we've identified the type, the location and also the temperature, which will be in the 3,000 range. And the PowerPoint will show you a scale of those lights. It's a nice warm to white. So it's good for security and visibility, but not too harsh and white. This will be a significant cost saving. So we're looking forward to implementing this project, both for environmental savings and financial savings. And prior to actually doing a full citywide deployment, DPW will set up a pilot project, a pilot program where we'll have a street or so where we'll notify the neighbors we're doing there, the community will know. So we can check it out in a live environment and mitigate any unintended consequences. The, the lights will also be one step down on wattage. And that's to offset some of the additional brightness that comes with LEDs. Our old lights have just naturally aged and dimmed. And the final things that I would just highlight for council that's in the CIP presentation and the full document is compliance with both the comprehensive plan and policies and financial policies. So in the CIP, you'll see a nice pie chart that summarizes where we're reinvesting in different functional areas. The largest chunk is on transportation, as I've indicated. The next grouping will be utilities, both sanitary and sewer. And then we're moving into facilities. It is a large diverse reinvestment and all important facts of functions of the community inconsistent with council's vision within the comprehensive plan and all the area plans. Also, from a fund balance perspective and debt service to expenditures, it is in compliance there. And there are charts in the presentation that will visually make that visible and present for the community. So with that, Mayor and Mr. Shields, I'll wrap up a verbal walkthrough of a PowerPoint presentation and look forward to having additional dialogue this evening, questions and comments. And then working it through with council and Mr. Shields during the rest of this budget process.
All right. Thank you very much. We've tried to imagine all you've said. And I think many of us probably do have a good idea what you're speaking about. But at later presentations for the public's benefit, if you're not able to see tonight, we will have PowerPoints available both at later presentations and on the city website. So at the present, we have two hands up, Mr. Duncan and Ms. Hardy. I believe Mr. Duncan had his hand up first. So let's go with, with you, Phil.
Okay, thanks. Is my audio coming in okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Cindy, before diving into a lot of the details, just a quick thing on the Park, Park Avenue, Great Streets. Does that project as contemplated include undergrounding the utility pole that would be on the, basically on the corner between the State Theater and where Clarence Don's is now? I was watching a planning commission rerun and it seemed that some confusion about, well, there's no confusion. Insight does not plan to underground the utility pole at that corner. And that's something that unless that was superseded by a later development, that's something that we definitely would want to do. I just wanted, wondered if that's included in the, in the Great Streets proposal.
The, the scope would have gone from the Kaiser side of North Washington at Park down to the library. So it's not at this point included. We can look at that while we're scoping and doing costs to see if we could pick that up or not.
Great. Okay. Well, my vote would be, I mean, I think we've all looked at the pretty pictures of the insight development. And the pictures wouldn't be quite so pretty if there's a big telephone pole sticking up, you know, at the corner as you come down Washington Street. So I, I would hope that we could find some way at this time, you know, to do that.
Make a note of that.
Yes, thank you. The second thing is on the, just through the equity lens thing. You know, I think we've done great work and are still doing great work over on the South Washington side of town, you know, with the multimodal center and the streetscape and so forth. They were doing on the main drag. I, I, I wonder if we've taken a comprehensive look at the side streets that feed into South Washington there. Obviously, the Tanner Hill building has got half of, half of a new streetscape approach. And we've done, you know, some work on Maple Avenue with the sidewalk in front of Ms. Henderson's house. But just when I drive over there, it still seems to me like several of the side streets, they, they look more like 1940 than the century that we're in. And I, I wonder again, if we're, you know, going to be doing some work and particularly focusing on the equity, if we really could give the same kind of treatment to that side of town as, as we, you know, do to most other parts of town. So that's the second request to look at. And third, and finally, the lack of streetscape completion in front of Beto's along Broad Street before you get to Core Power Yoga, that pinch point, which actually makes it impossible, I think, for anybody riding anything with wheels or, you know, steering a stroller to navigate. Gee, it seems like we've been talking about that for, since I came on to council. Are we planning to do something about that? So that's my third question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. For the equity lens and the sidewalks, at a staff level, we definitely agree with you that we need to look at those seats, side streets, and they're part of the missing links. And they would be appropriate ones that we would want to complete like South Maple from Wallace to Tanner Hill and South Washington or Hill up to the historic site, also over at Annandale and South Washington. So there's several areas for sure that would be something we'd want to look at prioritizing and working through standing up the sidewalk program, which will have 150,000 per year going forward. And the streetscape in front of Beto's is one that we have a long history with and trying to obtain the right of way. It certainly is one that we need to pick for ADA compliance. And we're looking that, at that as part of our Broad Street CIP projects and hope to resolve it.
All right.
Phil, were you done?
Yes, I'm, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for the really comprehensive update, even though we couldn't see the visuals. I did try to follow the documents in advance. And so I'll start with kind of general comments and feedback and then dive into specifics. So I appreciate the addition of the equity lens and the operating cost calculator. I think in the past, we've talked about how it's important not just to build new stuff, but actually make sure we have funds set aside for maintenance. I'm glad that we are operationalizing it and have kind of a more systemic way of doing it. So I'd love to see that done going forward. A general question I have for all things CIP is, I think the big elephant in the room is not knowing how much the American Recovery Act is going to deliver to Falls Church. And so is it possible to look through the CIP and figure out where we might have infrastructure needs that are kind of one-time expenses that don't have a funding source or could have an alternative funding source instead of debt financing it? That's something that we can use federal money for and get community input on. So a couple that come to mind, for example, is, I guess, the 125 for schools. I think that's proposed as Pago financing. Is that correct?
From fund balance reserves, yes.
Yeah. So using cash. And then I'm not sure about fellows or anything in the near term, whether that's going to be debt finance or cash. But I'd love to see a list of that now and pull those things out of the CIP just so that we can at least start wrestling with how to prioritize that. Because I imagine that the community probably will have input on that, especially if it's going to be infrastructure projects that we haven't been able to get to in the past. So that's kind of a general question. Do we know any specifics right now on how much we might expect? Because I did see that the city of Alexandria announced over the weekend that they're expecting about $60 million from ARP.
The Americans Rescue Plan or ARP is a very important item that you bring up. And certainly it's been signed. We are still working to confirm the dollar amounts. We have seen a spreadsheet that does provide a range of information. In Virginia, though, we're a little concerned they may be duplicating the amount of money for cities and towns because Virginia is very different. And so I know Alexandria announced that we are working with our federal delegation and national associations to confirm that, the dollar amount. It could range from the city for 3,000 to 16, 3,000, 3 million to 16 million. And so we definitely need to confirm the exact dollar amount so we can plan appropriately. And we are actively in that. The ARP money will come in two tranches. So we're not going to get it all at once. And it's can be spent till 2024. Also, we will not see the first dollar for at least 60 days. That's when it needs the first tranches to be distributed. And we don't have guidance yet. So we're actually working really closely with our federal delegation as well as National League of Cities, BML and GFPA for guidance, what's eligible and so forth. One of the key things we need to remember besides the point in time that you mentioned, one-time money, is this needs to be tied to COVID. So it is a revenue offset. It is one-time money. It can help with personnel and capital. It's limited on the infrastructure to water, sewer and broadband. But when you look at revenue offsets, there's probably other ways because infrastructure is really important that we could address that. But just because it's in the CIP as capital in one time doesn't automatically make it ARP eligible. So I say that just because we're working really hard to get guidance and clarity. I would be hesitant to pull anything out of the CIP right now because we don't know how we can use this. Certainly, we're starting to work at a staff level for what it could be. And then we'll align it with the guidance. And then we can come back and revise it with council. But we also need to make sure we can do rental assistance, utility assistance, PPE and all the other COVID-related items. And so the dollar amount will make a big difference. But some of the things you talk about like sidewalks, we were having just a recent internal conversation. When you're remote working, walking at home, at home or parks, there's things that probably one could tie to the impact of a COVID impact. And this is supposed pandemic and this is supposed to be more flexible than our regional, original money. But we just need to work through the devil and the details, as they say, for 800-page legislation.
Thank you. Yeah. So I agree that it would be premature to pull things out of the CIP. So maybe we just have a running list of things that would qualify using the filter of, you know, has to be used in this timeframe, COVID-related. And just so that, you know, if we can get those details before we have to approve a budget, we'll know that, hey, there might be other funding options for these things. It would be nice, certainly nice to have flexibility in the CIP for that.
Sure.
What's my general question? Some specifics now. I saw that in the CIP or maybe it was the, I think the CIP, we talked about upgrading the fleet. And I think it was in the Planning Commission and in previous discussions among council, we've talked about doing a conversion to a green fleet. Are the vehicles as planned, using five-year debt, going to be transitioning to green? And if not, why not?
Those vehicles are in the operating budget and not in the CIP because of price point, the type of financing. And so I, I'm, for that question, I need to defer to Ms. Baller or Mr. Bradley. We can either follow up with you or if they have an update now.
So I can give some background. I can't give, I can't give a full answer to Ms. Hardy's question. I do want to note that all of our diesel trucks do run biodiesel. During the warmer months, they run B20 and during the colder months, they run B10. I think I got those right. I hope I did. Anyway, the reason we switch is because the, the summer mix gels up in the vehicles during the winter. So we do run biodiesel in a lot of the trucks. I do want to make a note real quick that on some of the trucks we have, all electric is not entirely feasible, just with current charge times and turnover. I'm thinking like snow events or where we're running more than eight to 10 hours at a time. We, we certainly could switch to electric, but we would in essence double our fleet to serve some of those same purposes. So there, there will not be a complete change to electric right now for those reasons. But I'll, I'll stop there before I speak out of turn against our fleet manager. But I, I hope that gives you some background.
Yeah, that's helpful because I don't know what you're talking about anyways. So I think, I'm glad that we're at least thinking about it. Because my point is that if we had a fleet conversion plan, then any new vehicle, besides converting what we already have on hand, you know, any new vehicles, we should be thoughtfully considering whether we should go green or not. So if there's such a plan, you know, I'm happy to be directed to it. But I just want to make sure that it is something that we are thinking through and we're not just continuing to replace things with more fossil fuel burning vehicles. Another request for kind of a, I know we keep a running list of budget questions, but I'd love to see a list of unfunded headcount needs. I know that in general, Y had mentioned that this budget cycle, we have a lot of headcount requests. And I think we're funding it in various areas, but I'd love to know the specifics of where we are not funding and then potential impacts. More specific questions. On LED streetlights, I think it said that we were going to have a pilot area. Do you know when and where that will be up?
Zach, would you like to take that one?
Yes, I can take that one. So when that will be up, we're hoping for maybe a, an August, July or August timeframe of this year. We, we will have the work order into Dominion before the next fiscal year begins. How long it takes them to, to receive the material and get the manpower to install it? You know, that, I don't want to make Dominion sound like a bad guy. They're not. Their, their typical commitment is six to eight weeks. I, I don't know how, how close they're sticking to that schedule. But that, that was the last we heard from them. That was a couple of months ago.
Got it. And why is Freddie Park different in terms of getting a different light treatment or bulb or light lamp?
Yeah. So that park had, the current light matches the proposed light in that staff report. And that was something that the community and the, I guess Danny and Rick and Parks kind of worked through relatively recently. So we wanted to stay true to what we worked through with the residents and kind of honor the, the light selection they made.
And I know it's hard because you couldn't see the, the PowerPoint, but you'll see it's a much more Victorian look that stays with the current lighting structure. And all the other parks are going to the colonial, which is a dark sky.
Are the Freddie lights going to be dark sky compliant then?
That is a very good question. I, I do not know off the top of my head. I will have to look that up and get back with you.
Yeah. So again, they want to preserve the look of that, but I feel, I imagine that the neighbors would care about that potentially more.
We'll follow, take that as a question for follow-up.
Great, thank you. And then whenever the pilot is up, I think besides letting the impacted neighbors know, obviously, I think the entire community probably is going to be curious about it. And so if we get OCOM and letting people know to, you know, take a nice summer stroll out there, that'll be helpful too.
Yeah, we definitely will. So we can get feedback before we deploy citywide.
Great. My next two questions are around transportation. So I did spend some time looking through the transportation delivery schedule, which I think a general comment is, wow, I really appreciate all the work being underway. Clearly, this council sets a really high bar for getting things done in the transportation arena. So a big note of appreciation to staff for working on so much. A couple of specific questions. Broad Street multimodal improvements. I specifically looked at things that were either in engineering or construction in the next couple of years, knowing that those are what's going to hit the community and will be very visible. We haven't talked about that much. What exactly is that project?
Zach, I can't tell if Paul's on yet. So if you want to take it, then we can also follow up.
Yes, I will take it. I am sure I will miss several things in the scope of that project. But generally speaking, it is some bump outs at the intersections, some pedestrian improvements at Broad and Lee. I believe there are some brick crosswalks as well. At the, I want to say it's at some, but not all of the signalized intersections and a mid-block crosswalk near the ends of Virginia. And I see Paul has his hand up, so I will let him take it from there.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Paul Stoddard, Planning Director with the City of Falls Church. Happy to just give a brief introduction to the project. Zach's right on the general scope that it's designed to improve pedestrian safety along the West Broad Street corridor. It's really a product of the city's small area planning process for that area where it was recognized through conversations with the community that one of the challenges is actually on foot, getting across Broad Street north to south. So a lot of the investments were first geared toward making sure people can safely cross the street. There is going to be one new signalized crossing going in near the Spectrum Building. There is going to be one new signalized crossing going in near the, the Spectrum Building. And then it's obviously integrating with the, the hawk signals that are already underway. There is a public information session for folks that want to see a presentation on that project this Wednesday night with the Planning Commission, where they'll be receiving a presentation on the project. And I believe the thirty percent plans will be on display and available for, for public comment as well as feedback from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, that's exciting. At Broad and Lee, do you think, is the scope of this going to include new ped heads at all four legs?
Yes, it'll include mark cross as proposed and thirty percent plans, mark crosswalks at all four legs, new ped heads for all four legs to make sure people can see the signals wherever they are.
That's terrific. So I think we've harped on that one for a while since it only currently has two ped heads and not very visible ones. South Maple and Annandale, I think, is listed on there. And the EDC had gotten a preview of the Atlantic proposal. And I want to say South Maple and Annandale is where they're proposing to do a traffic circle. So if that does happen and gets approved, I just want to make sure we're not trying to get grant funding for this one while there might be some private investment in that intersection.
We're reviewing and coordinating that internally.
Great. And then my last one is a general comment in terms of long term facilities planning. So early on, I think I had pushed on making sure we were having kind of the long term, ten year plus view. Because I want to make sure that while we've clearly undertaken a lot, and I think we've touched nearly every school and city building in the past eight years, I want to make sure that we don't get surprised or have a backlog of capacity, capacity issues in the future. So going forward, I think maybe post COVID, when school enrollment stabilizes, besides the TJ improvements, I want to make sure that we kind of do some joint city and school capacity planning kind of in that ten year timeframe. So we can kind of plan proactively where we might need capital needs beyond obviously a lot of the big investments we've done to date. It's maybe more of a posted note for future in about six months or so, hopefully when we're on the other side of COVID.
Sure.
So thank you a lot. I again recognize we do set a really high bar for getting stuff done and we have delivered a lot recently. So I appreciate, I think it's evident when you look at the report card that if there are a couple of documents that can include policies and programs and then projects mapped against it since 2016. So I think staff should feel very proud of all that we've delivered so far. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, that you pass on to the transportation team. And Mayor, if I could just call out on the scheduled delivery that Ms. Hardy was referring to. There's also workload by fiscal year. And you'll see we're really working hard to align staff to the resources and phase out the projects because it's really hard to manage twenty-three and twenty-one projects at a time. We're probably in the sweet spot at fifteen, especially since we're getting so much federal money. Those are much more intense procurement and that's usually around two per year. So I just call out that additional resource and detail.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly. Vice Mayor Connolly, did you have your hand up? You may be muted. Unfortunately, I can't see folks who have their hands up. I can just see when they come in after that for the, due to our technical difficulties, I'm not able to see whose hand is actually up. But I believe I saw the vice mayor. I don't know, are you able to join the conversation, Vice Mayor Connolly? All right, while we're waiting for her, do others have questions or comments?
I'm here. I was having a hard time unmuting, sorry.
All right.
So I have several CIP questions and other general budget questions. So let me start with the CIP since Cindy's here. The first one is about, on page sixty, oh, that's the great budget, the police radios that you mentioned. Are the police radios compatible with the school radios? And how often do we upgrade police radios?
The, it's usually on a seven to ten year cycle. The ones that are coming up now are planned because we know Motorola is going to stop supporting. And this will be about eighteen months after the formal support. And then we won't be able to get parts and support for it's time for that. And I know in the past we've coordinated with the schools, but let me verify that.
So are these a whole new set of radios or they compatible with the existing radios?
No, it's a replacement, total replacement because Motorola is stopping production and support and parts for the current one.
And when was the last time we did this?
I will have to verify that. I believe it's probably around seven years ago, I'm thinking. Why it's nodding at me?
Okay. I just, I remember talking about it numerous times and.
Yeah, it's when we had to upgrade to the eight hundred megahertz.
So were they Motorola's, the ones we upgraded to?
Yes, we've, there's a regional police contract with Motorola. So we're interoperable between all of the NCR. So we're kind of in a certain framework and vendor so that we have compatibility.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, it would be good if they were also continued to be interoperable with the, with the schools as well as the region.
Yeah, I'll double check that. I know the chief is very oriented to that interoperability.
The turf fields? We're going to have three in the city? We're going to have four?
Practice field at the high school, the current football at the high school and then Larry Graves.
Larry Graves, and that's it. We're not at, somewhere I saw Madison Park, there was a wish to have one, have Madison Park after.
It may be a wish and people may have talked about it, but it's not built into the.
It's not built in, okay. Okay. And then this is a CIP-ish question, but it really is an operating budget. And that's just about the one point eight million coming from Founder's Row for school capital expansion. When that comes into the budget, which will be in fiscal year 2022, what's going to happen with that money?
Sure, Vice Mayor, the budget proposes to transfer the one point eight million to put it in the capital reserve. That's what the budget proposes. It can be used per the VC's agreement for debt service for construction of the new school. Anything that impacts enrollment growth, I think. But we are recognizing the incoming funding. And in addition, the budget also uses a hundred and twenty-five thousand from capital reserve for CIP needs at the schools.
Twenty-two. But the hundred and twenty-five thousand is not from the Founder's Row VCs. That's a.
It's from the capital reserve.
It's from capital reserve, but when the time comes to spend that one point eight million, will it be one point eight minus a hundred and twenty-five thousand? Or?
Well, the aid is now placed into the capital reserves and, and we can keep a separate track of it. But for now, we're just putting it in the capital reserve and we are using the capital reserve, general capital reserve for the hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay. So I would like to request that we do keep special track of it somehow. We haven't had money sitting in capital reserves from a voluntary concession specifically for school capital in a while because we've spent it all. But I do think we need to at least have some kind of notation somewhere that that's what this money is for. And then when the time comes to spend it, it needs to be part of CIP planning with the school board. Yes. Okay. So my other questions are more general budget questions. Should I let someone else go ahead or do you want me to ask general budget questions?
Just, yeah, keep on trucking.
Keep going.
Keep going, yeah, we got other things too tonight, so I want to just keep, keep rolling.
Yep, yep. Okay, on page sixty-seven, this is just a real general, Karen, when you've got personal property taxes estimated to be going up and transit occupancy tax going down, how does our transit occupancy tax predictions compare to what our 2021 actuals are? Do you think? How, like how fungible is that number? That's on page sixty-seven.
So the transient occupancy tax is one of the ones that is recovering at a much slower pace than some of the others that we have seen in the local taxes. And we will bring to the eight month report at the Budget and Finance Committee on Friday. It is improving compared to the pre-COVID average levels. However, we are still right now at about sixty to sixty-five percent of pre-COVID average for the months of January and February, so.
So it doesn't seem like it's going to come bouncing back too quickly.
Right.
All right. And then further down on that page, there's a charge for services, culture and recreation. And you have that staying the same. One million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars for twenty-one adopted and twenty-two proposed. Are those services, the fees for parks and recreation programs?
Yes, that is the larger portion of that one. And, and those are cost covering, like the revenues come in and they are for services that are provided. So we are. And, and so for those summer, spring and other programs that are offered in rec, recreation. And that is for that, yes. What was your second part of the question, sorry?
I'm just wondering, it just seems like it's a big jump from the 2020 actual of eight hundred forty-one thousand. Then our 2021, it doubles and 2022, it stays doubled.
I'll have to get you some details, but I think there were some, some programs that were added. And, and, and I'll, I'll have to check, check with Danny and get back to you. I'll just put it in the responses, budget response.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just curious and, and maybe it all balances itself out with the expenditures.
Oh, I know what happened in fiscal year 2020. That was the last four months that COVID hit. And those were some of the summer programs that were prepaid and for the programs that were going to be offered in twenty-one. And we had to return every penny of that because all the programs when COVID hit, they were all returned. So 2020 is exceptionally low because of that. And in 2021, they started doing distancing programs that they're doing that are distancing even for field programs. And even the summer camps came back, but at, at a revised kind of program. So that's where I think we are at a kind of a normal level in twenty-one. But in 2020, twenty's actual was low when COVID just hit.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. But it just seems like a huge bounce back. So that's my other curiosity there. So we really, there's maybe that much of a bounce back. There are a few questions I have just about where people are mentioning salary equity and adding employees. And they're all wishless things that weren't added. And I'm just wondering, one of the requests we always get, and the city attorney isn't on the call tonight, but for several years now, she has asked for another attorney and additional funding for outside counsel. So I just, I'm wondering what, she's done a huge amount of work on a huge amount of projects in the last few years. Has she had to go beyond her budget and find money elsewhere in the executive budget to be able to fund some of those things? And have we looked at a comparison to say, how much are we using outside counsel with? And would it make sense to have another attorney in that office?
So given the gamut of issues that were handled by her office in the last year and even the current year with the West Falls Church and other issues that, at, you know, the contracts that we are handling and, or a house and city hall and all kinds of issues that have gone. We've been able to provide funding, additional funding based on the project funding that was. If you recall, West Falls Church, we have asked, requested legal assistance for that. And when the city hall was going, there was some assistance that was required for that, that was covered under, under the project. So, so far she has not gone over her budget and, and we've been able to make her whole as per the needs. And her operating budget for professional services, as was discussed, did not need to be increased. So we left it at where it is and we kind of just go quarter by quarter and see should any immediate needs come up and, and excess funding is required, then of course we do come to council for budget amendment requests.
Okay. But I'm thinking more from a strategic point of view, like that because it's a wide range of topics that are covered in the city attorney's office, does it make more sense to hire subject experts to work on each one? Or does it make that we have the best helping us with each individual topic? Or does it make more sense to have another city attorney in her office to be able to be a generalist and handle all of those things?
Yeah, I would, I would have to defer that to Carol and she's the best advisor on that one.
Okay. Can you put that on my list of questions?
Yes, sure.
Yes. And then here's, this is one for the treasurer, this about first, property tax relief, which is on page two hundred and ten. And I'd just like an update on how we're doing there. Looks like we spent a lot the first year and then it has gone down a little bit. And I'm wondering what's going on with that.
Yes, we will provide details on that in responses. There has been some activity change and, and more relief. We reduced the budget in twenty twenty-one, but the numbers are actually higher as far as the actuals go. So that's why we increased it in the proposed budget.
But it doesn't go all the way up. I don't think it goes all the way up as high as where it was in twenty.
Yeah, so twenty actual, and it's possible it was a lot, some to do with the COVID as well. And our twenty-two proposed is based on what we see as the current year's trend is. So what we have seen in the seven, eight months of this year, and we base our projections in twenty-two based on that. Of course, we take into consideration what the actuals for the previous years are, but.
Right. So. Okay. And then I guess as we just don't know who's going to need what and who's going to move into the city and be not have to pay property tax because of the veterans tax relief.
Yes.
So that's always a surprise every year. So I'd just be curious on that one. There's a hundred thousand dollars in here to go towards the Affordable Housing Fund. And I'm wondering if that's a grant match or is it a specific project? Or is it just a placeholder to put a hundred thousand dollars in there to show that the city is putting money in towards affordable housing? And have a project it's assigned to?
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Fund currently has a balance of three hundred thousands. With this hundred thousand, it'll be four hundred. So the intention is to use this four hundred thousand as a match for the grant, all of it.
Okay, so that'll be spent this year?
As, as a match to the next grant. Cindy, correct me if I'm misspeaking.
Yeah, for the current Amazon Reach Grant, we've using existing money and what council supported. This will allow us to continue matching for year three, the next grant.
The hundred thousand dollars in there allows us to apply for next year's Reach Grant?
Yes, it will give us that opportunity. The Reach Grant doesn't have a requirement for how much match. They are looking for local commitment. And what that next year's grant is, we'll continue to work with Housing and Human Services for what that will be and make some recommendations to council.
Okay. And then this is just another completely off base question, but as we were talking about the personal property tax relief, it occurs to me that that off, Jody's office has a really good database of senior citizens and elderly because they do such, you know, personal outreach to all those people. And as we've talked about vaccine outreach, I'm just wondering, can we use that database and make sure that every single person's getting personal property or, you know, property tax relief is also learning about how to get a vaccine and getting help to get vaccines? Not necessarily budget related, but on my mind right now.
Yeah, we'll take that note and can follow up. Sometimes there's some privacy things we need to sort through, but it's certainly a good resource database we can pass on to Nancy and Jody to work through.
Right, right. But if they can even work together and just to, you know, reach out to people. I think that would be because in our concerns about making sure that elderly people are able to access vaccine registration. This is a nice group of almost a hundred people that we could reach out to. Okay, I think those are all my, I have other questions, but I'll save them for later. Thank you.
All right, who, who's up next? Any other questions? All right, so there is going to be plenty of additional time for questions and comments. I see Mr. Snyder has one. But let's try to kind of measure our comments and questions tonight. We do have several other items to get through before the night's done. So keep that in mind if you would. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks very much. So really three quick questions. First of all, the extent to which the budget is funding the top recommendations, at least the top recommendations of the Police Review Commission. Secondly, Secondly, um, the discussion about metro funding and how um, the doomsday scenario um, has been avoided and what we're doing collectively to prevent that scenario of closing stations and very long headways um, doesn't recur um, in metro um, discussions in the future. So those are the two more specific areas. More general areas, how's our tax rate comparing with other jurisdictions of similar sizes in Northern Virginia? And where can we identify uh, some additional savings? Let's assume that we get um, some of the most recent federal funding and let's assume that we don't. I'm interested in that. And finally, I'm interested in uh, which is more a question for the schools. Uh, what is the um, what is the uh, student population count likely to be under current situations and then likely to be with the um, increased uh, numbers of students that would be generated from the apartments that are being proposed? And whether we've got that adequately funded uh, in the future by VCs or otherwise. Thank you.
All right. Um, I don't know if any of those questions are at anyone's fingertips or answers are at anyone's fingertips. If not, I would just say that at our next meeting, if you would please prepare answers for those questions.
Uh, yes, Mayor Tarter, we will uh, provide responses to all the questions in writing as part of the next uh, council meeting package. And this will be an ongoing process. Uh, council members can send their questions even by email and we will include this as part of their budget response document.
All right, is that satisfactory, Mr. Snyder?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Other questions or comments for staff?
Got a question.
Sure, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So Wyatt, Karen, you all had mentioned um, that the tax rate that's being advertised is not the tax rate that involves the one cent rate cut. And that we could ask for more. Why, why wouldn't we advertise the lower rate as it stands?
Uh, so uh, Councilmember Lichtenhouse, that will ultimately be a council decision that you can make when you vote on first reading of this ordinance. We usually recommend that the council adopt an advertised rate to give you flexibility. And that flexibility could be in the nature of, you know, emergencies that come up between now and adoption. Would be so that as you listen to public input, you've got room uh, to address the comments as they come in. That's why we typically recommend that. But again, that is the council's decision.
Okay. I mean, I for one would like to see us advertise uh, the one cent rate cut. Um, I I think it's important both psychologically and to set the tone for budget discussions this year. Um, can you all remind me again um, what the total growth in property tax revenue is? Expected to be for fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
Ms. Bauer?
So the real estate property tax is expected to grow by one point one nine five million, which is a two percent increase over fiscal year twenty-one adopted budget.
Okay. So one penny on the tax rate is four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in revenue. And if we wanted to offset that total property tax rate growth that's anticipated, that would be approximately two and a half cents. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. However, I would like to mention that off the one point one nine five million, there is a fund that also includes uh, new construction, uh, which is about eight hun- um, nine hundred and seventy thousand to that effect. So the amount left after that would be a half a penny, close to two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Sure, but the but the general growth is uh, to offset that, new construction aside, would be two and a half cents, correct? Total?
Yes, including the new construction, yeah.
Okay, so um, my, my feeling this year um, for the budget, and and I feel very strongly about this, that um, we've got the ability to provide additional relief to our taxpayers beyond the one cent that's being uh, proposed. We've got a number of new development projects. We have been um, very fortunate that those are bearing fruit and having impacts. And I think just over the last year, um, we have shown that, you know, we have the financial means um, to to offer a more significant rate cut. And I think it's important, and I mentioned this last week, um, for folks to recognize, for all of us to recognize the fact that our tax, our taxpayers in general have sacrificed a lot uh, over the last year. And I believe that um, they deserve relief uh, and recognition for that sacrifice beyond the one cent. Our taxpayers have financially supported this city. Our staff of the city, the schools, the staff at the schools, the businesses, the residents that are in need. We have uh, effectively supported uh, everyone uh, in this city uh, during the pandemic. While folks uh, in the city, our taxpayers have lost jobs, they've lost wages. Um, they've had to spend money to make up for um, for services in the city that may have been disrupted as a part of the pandemic. And uh, experienced, I think, just, you know, significant distress uh, in general. And um, I I would like for us to recognize that by giving our taxpayers more meaningful uh, relief through a more substantial tax rate cut. So uh, what I would like for all of us to consider uh, is a full two and a half cent property tax rate cut. Uh, so that's one and a half beyond what the city manager is proposing. Um, and by my math, that's only about another six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars uh, in, in property tax revenue. And between the city and schools, I think that we could find that. Um, we have been the beneficiaries and will continue to be the beneficiaries of additional relief. That money will come in. Um, and so we've got the ability to do this. And I, again, I think it is important for us uh, to effectively read the audience here. And from a false church perspective, I think that it's important for us to to be nimble and agile enough to respond to that. And we have the financial capabilities to do it. So my proposal, um, and my position is going to be uh, to cut the tax rate deeper than the one cent that's offered because I know that we can do it. Uh, we have the money to do it and we can do it without cutting significant programs. Um, so that is, that is going to be my proposal. Uh, and in addition to that, um, I would also like us to consider um, keeping the stormwater uh, fees flat. Again, I I don't think that our taxpayers deserve anything other than uh, relief that we can offer. And both of these, I think, are the most tangible, practical and absolutely feasible ways uh, to to recognize that. And and now is the time to do it. Uh, and and we should rise to that challenge. So those are my comments for tonight on the budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. If I could take an egg timer, three minutes, I'd like to uh, second to what Mr. Lichtenhouse has said. Come budget time, it's always fortunate for me that I live where I live because I have a very typical house. You know, there, half as many houses are fancier and half as many houses are a little less expensive. So where the budget hits me is a pretty good barometer, I think. So our house went from seven hundred and seventy thousand last year to an assessment of eight hundred and ten thousand this year. It's a full five percent increase. So if we uh, levy a tax rate of one thirty-five, five, uh, one thirty-four, five, let's say that, then I'm paying four hundred and forty-three dollars more in taxes. Uh, you'd have to get the tax rate down to one twenty-nine before it would be um, a wash, before it would be, you know, uh, a tax rate that would make up for the assessment increase. I don't think anybody's going to be able to propose a one twenty-nine tax rate, but I would like to lend my support to the notion that we advertise next week when we vote, a tax rate of one thirty-three and a a freeze uh, on any increase in the stormwater. Because as we've heard earlier tonight, uh, we are certainly going to be coming into some money that we are going to be able to use for that particular purpose. Uh, and so I think we should build that into our planning uh, right from the get-go. So that's just a quick thought I wanted to offer tonight as we set things up for next week. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? Uh, we'll move on to the next item. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yeah, I'm just, I I'm wondering uh, how that works. In the past, we have people that are trying to come up with different ways to do the budget. We've ended up with four different budgets and uh, two months of chaos as we're fighting over six hundred thousand dollars. And I for one, don't think this community is going to be able to stand that. So I feel like we gave the city manager guidance and we gave the superintendent guidance and said a two and a half uh, percent increase is what you're going to get. The school board came in at two and a half, Mr. Shields has come in at two and a half. And I find it really irresponsible that there are city council members that think we should keep paring away at the needs that are here. There are plenty of needs that have not been met. And um, two and a half, two and a half percent is what we expected in December. That means everyone's taxes are going to go up a little bit because it has to come from somewhere. So I um, I do not want to end up in a process for the next two months where we have four different budgets and we're trying to cut, shave a little off here and shave a little off here. And we have thousands of people coming to our meetings upset and angry. Um, it seems like this is a year when there are enough people upset and angry about tons of other things. And personal grief and all those things are really important. But I I think we do not want to set ourselves up for that kind of conversation and that kind of city fight.
Ms. Vice Mayor, I I don't find it irresponsible uh, for us to revisit the tax rate that we are levying against the taxpayers in false church. Things have changed, things will continue to change. Um, but I do not find it irresponsible to consider offering relief to our taxpayers. And and what I frankly find more troubling in conversations like this is that when we talk about it's just six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, that that is just a drop in the bucket uh, and that would only translate to a few hundred dollars per taxpayer. Um, I I I think frankly is offensive to folks that depend on that uh, and is offensive to the idea that, you know, there is a, there is a principle, a moral obligation for us to recognize that we are responsible for the money that we levy from taxpayers and to use that responsibly. And if we have the ability to take less than we should. And it has been shown over the last year and has been shown during this budget process that we have that ability. And so I I don't find it irresponsible or unreasonable. And I can't imagine that folks are going to show up with pitchforks and torches saying, you ought to tax me more. So I think it is absolutely a conversation that we need to responsibly have at this particular juncture.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have the conversation and it sounds like you and I are going to disagree on that one.
Certainly.
There, we also have a responsibility to provide services to the citizens of this city. And if we're slicing here and slicing there, it's going to be difficult to provide those services. So let's have the conversation, but it's going to make for some long meetings and some very unhappy people.
Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you. I think from my perspective, when we talk about what funding is coming from federal government, if the range is three million to sixteen million, I mean, that's an incredible range. And that makes a huge difference in what we're able to do. And the guidance on what we can fund with that three to sixteen million dollars makes a huge difference in what our budget looks like. I think it's really difficult to have some of these conversations without more information on how that impacts what what we can and can't do. And obviously, there are going to be more iterations as that becomes clear. And I think that's going to really inform what we're able to do uh, with our tax rate and with, well, with the the entire budget. Sixteen million is a huge percentage. So I look forward to learning more and sussing out what we can and can't do and how that impacts it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, so before we move on, I just have a couple comments I'd like to make. Um, I I would echo the uh, remarks earlier about um, the money that may be coming from the federal government. It appears that it actually is is highly likely we'll be getting a decent amount of money, if not a substantial amount of money. And so I think we need to prepare for that. And um, that's great for the city. There may be some really good opportunities um, to to use one-time money for one-time purposes. And I guess I would just ask staff to really start to be thinking about that and um, consider the priorities we've articulated um, to staff in the past, things like traffic calming, pedestrian safety, um, obviously stormwater. There's a whole lot of things that we've been working with and working on for a number of years. And I think this may be an opportunity um, to uh, you know, work our budgets. But I I do think there'll be greater clarity in the coming weeks. I don't know whether it'd be absolute clarity by the time that um, this budget needs to be passed, but I do think we need to be giving thought to that. As to the remark about um, or the comments about um, green vehicles, I would love to see us move to electric vehicles and be the progressive community um, on environmental matters that I think we have been, um, just like we had the Volvo police cars that were known throughout Northern Virginia. I would love to have our police department have. Try to resolve our technical problems. This is probably the fourth or fifth week, it seems like, in a row. Um, we've had issues. And so um, I I don't know where it's coming from. It seems like it might be different each time. But if we can, let's really try to make sure we're squared away uh, for these meetings. But let's go ahead and reconvene if we can. And up next on the agenda is Founder's Row Two Special Exception Application. Um, Mr. Shields, who's handling this?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Tarter. So uh, we'll have Jeff Haller and we'll give a uh, a brief introduction for this project. And um, and then uh, Joe Muffler, representing Mill Creek, will provide, I think, a verbal uh, presentation. We will abbreviate it if we're not able to show the pictures and then we'll have Q and A with council. Mr. Haller, uh, welcome to the meeting and um, and we'll turn over the floor to you for the staff report.
Uh, thank you, Wyatt. Uh, can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Uh, so uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, State Council for having me. Um, tonight, uh, we are going to be talking about uh, the Founder's Row Two uh, Proposed Special Exception uh, and Rezoning Application. Um, council is being requested to provide feedback on the first submission of the Founder's Row Two Mixed Use Development proposed at the intersection of West Broad Street and Southwest Street. Um, additionally, council is requested to provide any preliminary feedback and guidance on piloting an updated special exception public review process to engage boards and commissions earlier in the special exception review process. Uh, so a little bit about the project, uh, it's a mixed-use building with a maximum height of eighty-five feet, uh, comprised uh, of uh, six levels of residential multifamily rental apartments uh, with about three hundred nineteen units uh, above ground floor retail. Uh, the ground floor retail is uh, just under six, uh, sixteen thousand square feet uh, with frontage along West Broad and Southwest Street. Uh, there's four hundred and thirty-one spaces of underground parking. Uh, and the building height varies from eighty-five feet along West Broad Street to thirty-three feet uh, along uh, Ellison Street. Uh, the application uh, is a special exception uh, uh, to allow residential development within a mixed-use development. Uh, it's also a special exception uh, for an up to thirty-feet height bonus for the proposed building height of eighty-five feet. And it's a rezoning uh, ordinance application. Uh, the area currently T, Zone T one has been requested for rezoning to be one uh, to match the rest of the site. Just a little bit more about the site. Uh, the surrounding uses uh, include single-family residential properties on Ellison Street and Southwest Street. And future mixed-use uh, development Founder's Row is across the street at the corner of West Broad and Northwest Street, uh, which is under construction. Uh, this site uh, is part of the Broad Street corridor revitalization area. And by state code, revitalization districts allow for densities of at least uh, three point O F A R. Uh, density greater than three-point floor, uh, I'm sorry, three, uh, three point O floor area ratio uh, is already being constructed across the street of Founder's Row. Uh, regarding the the special exception primary criteria, um, one thing to note uh, is that the first submission uh, and 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 the analysis of that first submission uh, was based on the previous special exception code uh, for primary and secondary criteria that has now been updated as of February twenty-second of this year. Uh, the next submission of the project will be reviewed and based on the updated special exception code. Uh, so the first, uh, the first primary criteria, uh, the resulting development conforms uh, to the city's adopted comprehensive plan and design guidelines. Uh, staff, please, that the proposed develop, uh, the proposed project demonstrates uh, man- Staff believes that the proposed develop, uh, the proposed project demonstrates many of the important principles in the comprehensive plan. And many of the design content, concepts utilized in the project is also consistent with the city's design guidelines. Uh, as for the second bit of primary criteria, which is that the resulting development provides for significant net new commercial square footage and allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses. The proposed retail uses could potentially hire, hi, offer higher quality retail experience at a, at a key intersection at Broad and Southwest. The proposed additional affordable housing units for the life of the project at 12% is two times that of recent projects. It's a tangible community benefit associated with, with those residential use. These additional or doubling of ADU units is significant, but the monetary value is offset by the developer not providing capital contributions to schools, library and park facilities. The proposed project provides a mix of commercial and residential uses totaling approximately 384,691 square feet of gross floor area with a 4% slash 94% commercial residential radio, the ratio. Uh, and the third bit of primary criteria is that the resulting development produces substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue to the city. According to our calculation and the methodology used in recent special exception project evaluations, the project, the projected annual net physical impact of the project is about half a million dollars. If public service costs are higher than expected due to a higher, a higher than usual pupil ratio, the fiscal impact could be as low as $205,000 annually. As for the, the secondary criteria, I won't go through all those, but staff analysis is included within the staff report. But, uh, but we will, I will note that most if not all the second, secondary criteria is generally met by the project as of this first submission. Regarding voluntary concessions, no formal VC document was included in the first submission, but the applicant has indicated that it will be a part of future submissions. Regarding parking, uh, the developer is, is proposing an underground parking garage with 431 parking spaces with 80, uh, 80 spaces for retail parking and 351 spaces for residential parking. For the mix of the uses proposed, zoning ordinance requires 573 spaces. So the applicant is requesting an overall reduction in parking of 142 spaces or 25, uh, 25%. Just one last note request about timing. At the, uh, the February Economic Development Committee meeting, city staff presented a proposal for improving the board and commission review process for development applications. A key component of the proposal is an early presentation to the planning commission prior to council's formal referral. The intent is that by hearing from boards and commissions early, key design elements can be explored in the early stages of project review and changes are easier to incorporate. Consistent with that proposal, staff has scheduled a work session with the planning commission on April 7th, 2021. With that, I, I know that I have Gary and Paul also on the call. If they, if they'd like to chime in, otherwise I can turn it over to Joe Muffler with Mill Creek.
All right. Thank you very much. Gary, Paul, you got anything to add?
Uh, no, uh, I think that was a, a comprehensive presentation.
All right. Mr. Muffler, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Mayor, this is Cindy. I believe we can bring up the presentation.
All right, we'll go ahead then.
All right. On screen.
I can't see it. I don't know if other folks can or not, but, uh, I cannot hear on my computer.
Should be up on the live stream in a minute. We'll test, um, Joe, when you go to advance, I won't actually be advancing. It'll be Jamal Matthews. So just say next and hopefully we'll be seeing this on the cable and live stream.
Great. Well, thank you, Jamal. I'll make sure to, to, to mention when to move forward. I appreciate you helping to bring this up. I will do my best to present this visual presentation verbally. For those that are having technical difficulties, I do apologize if my speech does not communicate everything, but I will certainly do my best. So, uh, I know this has been a long meeting thus far. I want to be quick with the presentation so I can, uh, get feedback, question and answers from, from council. We are very excited and honored to be here tonight, um, to present this. I am joined tonight, again, my name is Joe Muffler with Mill Creek Residential Trust. We are the contract purchasers of the property and ultimately the owner and developer of what will be Founder's Row Two. And for those of, you know, for the public or anyone that's unaware, we are the owners and developers of Founder's Row Phase One directly across the street. I am joined tonight by members of my design team, including Sean Blair from Odell. He is the architect on the project, project, Antoinette Isherwood with Walter Phillips, civil engineer, Will Johnson from Wells and Associates, who is our traffic engineer. This project has been a long time in the works. Candidly, we've been working for over two years on this. We first brought it before the Economic Development Committee a little over a year ago, uh, pre-pandemic. In the last 12 months, it has changed substantially as has, uh, the city's zoning ordinance and some of the requirements. And, uh, we, again, we are honored to be here and excited to present this to you. A good amount of thanks goes to city staff and to the Economic Development Committee, who have provided extensive feedback on this project again, over the last 12 months. And to that, uh, to that end, as we now get into the presentation, we gave an initial presentation to the EDC two weeks ago, received really good feedback, including from members of, of council tonight. And over those two weeks, we have worked with our design team to try to incorporate a lot of those comments into this presentation. Or even if it's not in the presentation in terms of picture, at least incorporate it into our program. So the presentation and program you see tonight varies slightly than that was initially submitted to, uh, to staff about four months ago. So this project is evolving. We are taking, you know, seriously the comments and responses we receive. And we look forward to working through this process together. So with that, um, why don't we go ahead and get started on this? Jamal, if you don't mind going to the next slide, just a very brief introduction of the, uh, design team here. Again, Mill Creek is the developer, Odell Associates the architect, Walter Phillips, Wells and Associates, and J2E Engineers is the landscape architect. Go ahead on to the next slide. Just as a brief introduction, uh, just as an overview of the existing site, the two lots that we are proposing to redevelop and conceptualize as Founder's Row Phase Two are 1001 and 1003 West Broad Street. Those are currently occupied by the Carpet Store and the previous Rite Aid. Though both buildings are currently functionally vacant, uh, Rite Aid abandoned their lease about a year ago. And the Carpet Store, I think, has been, you know, functionally vacant and semi-occupied for, for a few years now. Those two buildings, I think it's important to note, uh, take up approximately 25,000 square feet in combined size. Now that 25,000 square feet, as if you know the buildings, isn't strictly retail space. Clearly there, that includes warehouse space, loading space, trash, backup, back of office. But they are 25,000 square feet in total density. So I just, I just want to make that point before we speak about our program. Jeff already went through the zoning, but essentially, uh, you know, this is in conformance with, uh, small area plans, future land use map. And is a very similar request to what was made at Founder's Row Phase One by way of zoning. Jamal, if you don't mind the next slide. Here is a summary of the proposed program, which again, it is a mixed use vision that's meant to complement Phase One in the evolving downtown environment of the City of Falls Church. It is an attempt to concentrate, um, retail and residential uses, uses at the heart of the city's commercial corridor, while also being sensitive, uh, in both designing use to the surrounding neighborhoods as well. We are proposing 319 residential homes, um, which we will get into a little bit more in terms of the diversity of the residential uses. And here is a change from the submission to where we are today. We are now propose, uh, proposing 20,000 square feet of total commercial space, of which 15,000 square feet would be assigned as neighborhood serving ground floor retail. And another 5,000 square feet would be set aside for office use. I also want to note that that commercial space does not include outdoor commercial activation areas or a shared community coworking office space. This program again, has evolved substantially over the last 15 months with feedback. I believe that it, it targets quite a few uses that are present in the city, expands on them and even brings some uses that might be unique. Jamal, if you don't mind the next slide. Here's a very, you know, you know, 10,000 foot view over, uh, overview of the site plan and its surrounding context. And Jamal, next slide is a more detailed, um, kind of, you know, overview of, of what it is that we are proposing. In the purple, you can see the ground floor retail areas, um, separate retail bays capturing about 15,000 square feet of ground floor neighborhood serving retail, again concentrated along Broad and West Street. There is a retail parking entrance off of Broad Street, and that is a substantial, uh, design change from our submission and frankly, from our presentation two weeks ago where we had two entrances off, off of Broad Street. So now there is one concentrated retail parking entrance off of Broad. And if you're looking along the right-hand side, you will see on the level below, because there is significant topography as you go down West Street. On the lower level, that is where the residential parking entrance is. The retail does include outdoor retail pavilions, which, uh, we believe really activates the streetscape. You'll see some of that in some of these renderings. It's a very urban design and especially post-pandemic allows for outdoor retail use, which we believe will be, uh, not only create a better streetscape environment, but clearly a more, uh, appealing retail environment for the tenants and users as well. It also preserves, you know, the 10-foot wide streetscape elements, uh, that is important, especially along Broad Street. You can see the arrow in the orange pointing to the, uh, the, the office space, which is conceptualized to be utilized by medical and or professional office users, uh, expanding on a need, uh, that really serves, that, you know, that the citizens of Falls Church, uh, and neighborhood serving uses, uh, which is a theme for us in the commercial context here. There is, it's hard to see here, you can see very small sliver of it, the community coworking space, which I will touch on further later, but that is 5,000 square feet as well. That is not included in our commercial ratio, uh, but it is 5,000 square feet of shared coworking, uh, conference space. Reason you can't see here is again, topography, it's on the lower level. Other important characteristics of the project, as you move towards Ellison Street, Jeff summarized, the building does taper to three stories, very similar to how it does along Park Avenue for Founder's Row Phase One with townhome style designs. We have evolved those to include things like front lawns and stoops that do look more significantly like townhome style units. And then lastly, on the, uh, some feedback that we received from the, uh, from the EDC as well, we have created an open space park at the intersection of West and Ellison Street, which we think will expand upon the connectivity to the neighborhood, creates a residential gateway and really helps transition from that commercial to residential context. So very quick summary of the uses and then above this is the residential along with the amenity space. Next slide, Jamal. From residential, again, we wanted to create a thoughtful diverse mix, uh, that brings new renters into the city, that isn't just a kind of one-size-fits-all type of model. It is very similar to what we have done at Founder's Row on a more condensed version, but essentially it's bringing your standard, uh, multifamily rental apartments along with age-restricted apartments that are segmented for renters 55 years and older. That is a use that is expanding, but is still woefully underserved, especially inside the Beltway, uh, markets. And then also our affordable housing commitment. So the way we thought of this is a barbell style approach to home design. On one end, you have our standard homes, which we have programmed to be 850 square feet. That's compared to 925 square feet, uh, across the street at Phase One. And it should be noted is among the smallest apartment units in the city. That was intentional. It is geared towards a younger renter. It is geared towards a more affordable rent check, uh, be, at creating a lower price point, uh, for the slightly smaller unit. You've got that one end of the spectrum as opposed to the, uh, other end of the, of the barbell, which is larger sized units for your age-restricted homes. Those are over 1,000 square feet. And again, reserved for adults looking downsized from their current homes, looking to live inside this, inside the Beltway, inside the City of Falls Church. Again, in an offering that is woefully underserved. Phase One does offer 72 homes. So combined, you're looking at a little bit over 134 age-restricted homes in the City of Falls Church. We have proffered 12% of the total homes, uh, to be set aside as affordable dwelling units. I will touch on that later. Uh, and then one thing to note is that 75% of the unit mix is, uh, studios, one bedrooms or one bedroom dens slash workspaces. That is intentional to minimize the impact on, uh, you know, on the city's infrastructure. And we believe it does serve a demographic, uh, that maybe hasn't been, uh, served in some of the other projects that the city has created. Certainly some of the larger more condo style, uh, apartments that were developed last cycle. Jamal, next slide. Again, I've touched on this, but there are a variety of commercial uses that we're proposing as well. And I would say that all of them center around the theme of being neighborhood serving retail. We all know that Founder's Row Phase One is programmed to be very lifestyle entertainment heavy retail, which is fantastic. That is lacking in the City of Falls Church. I think we all agree. And that's going to create incredible destination environment. But one thing that is never going away and that unfortunately gets set aside in favor of, you know, quote unquote sexier uses, is true neighborhood serving ground floor retail. When we say that, we mean things like convenience marts, pharmacies, dry cleaners, uh, office space, things that people can use on their daily basis as opposed to a Friday or a Saturday night. That is how we are, uh, that is how we are programming the retail here at Phase Two as a solid complement to, again, the lifestyle entertainment heavy focus at Phase One. We have programmed 15,000 square feet. You can kind of tell in these renderings, it might be a little tough because they are small thumbnails, but the storefronts have been recessed to allow for outdoor seating, whether it's outdoor seating for the tenants, creative art spaces. There's a lot of creativity we can utilize there. But again, I can't emphasize enough how many tenants we meet with, uh, for Phase One and our other retail, that just wish they had something like this four-season, uh, outdoor retail space post-pandemic is going to be very, very appealing. And I think will create a really unique, uh, streetscape environment along Broad and West Street. I've spoken of the flexible office space, which is 5,000 square feet dedicated to medical or professional office use, in addition to the 5,000 square feet of the shared coworking amenity. If you don't mind going to the next slide, Jamal. This is where we transition over to, uh, more of our community benefits. So one of the things that has been proffered here is how do we explore alternative retail? Things that, you know, aren't tired, uh, you know, office space, you know, traditional office space, I think we all agree, is, is much tougher these days than it was maybe 10 years ago. Things that are being successful are smaller coworking space, not massive WeWork type environments, but this was originally, uh, programmed as an amenity space for our residents. We are shifting heavily into these type of amenities at all of our new communities. But for Founder's Row and the City of Falls Church, the way we are programming this is as a community benefit where on some kind of membership basis, whether it's a light fee or just a registration, members of the community can use this alongside our residents for, for, uh, for coworking space, in addition to having conference rooms and spaces available here for local nonprofits to, to reserve and utilize for a community meeting. So we see this as being at both an amenity to our residents, along with an amenity to the city as well. Uh, next slide, Jamal. Here is a summary of the proposed community benefits. We have not put together a VC package because candidly, we wanted to get feedback before we started memorializing anything in writing. But this back package does total more than $33,000 per, dollars per home, which is more than Phase One. And in line with, uh, it, it's more than anything except for the Insight Project, which had some additional benefits specifically associated with the Black Box Theater that, uh, the $33,000 is, is in line with if you remove some of those very unique features of the Insight Project. The major benefit on this is the 12% affordable housing commitment. But one thing that I do want to make very clear is Mill Creek is flexible with how these benefits are applied. We are willing to discuss with council, boards and commissions, staff, et cetera, how these benefits can be shifted around if we prefer to do less affordable housing and more, more dollar commitments. But given the, uh, demand for affordable housing in the city's commitment to it, we really wanted to maximize affordable housing and then we could entertain conversations about other things as well. I don't need to summarize all these. I'll touch on a couple of the major ones outside of the affordable housing. We are, we are committing to lead gold. We are committing to the, uh, community retail, be it the, the retail, the office, the coworking space. There is thoughtful design elements as we'll go through here. And then, uh, just as importantly is the fiscal impact, which I will touch on at the, at, at the latter point as well. But transportation upgrades, infrastructure upgrades, including utility underground and street repairs, the, the streetscape standards, which hopefully you can see in the renderings, the improvement, uh, that's brought on there to really activate, uh, and, and, and carry on the commercial corridor that's been created at the West Broad residences, at Founder's Row Phase One, and ultimately down to West Falls Church as well. Next slide, Jamal. Transportation and parking, I'll touch on this frankly, if you all have questions, but in the interest of time, I do have Will Johnson on that can talk through some of the engineering. I do have Will Johnson on that can talk through some of the engineering. We have done a transportation, a traffic study on this. We have found that through transportation improvements, we can improve the level of service at the West and Broad intersection, which is a difficult intersection at this point in time, we do realize that. The net impact of traffic on West Street from this project would be approximately 3% to 4% more cars in the afternoon and morning rush hour periods. Jamal, next slide, please. So to that end, there are some proposed improvements that we are talking about making, whether it's, you know, improvements to single timing and phasing, traffic calming, improved pedestrian crossing, TDM programming, and working with the city on residential only, resident zone parking only along Ellison Street. And that's residence for the neighborhood, not residence for this development. Next slide, please, Jamal. Design and architecture, this is where I was going to show you all a very cool animation. We're not going to do that, but one of the biggest pieces of feedback we received from the EDC two weeks ago was the architecture, as you see in this renderings, I like it, architecture is very personal, I understand it's very subjective. Our inspiration was clearly Phase One, given the extensive amount of conversations we had with boards and commissions about Falls Church architecture and what is looked for in Falls Church. We carried that through to Phase Two. I do understand that that is now a long stretch of architecture that can conceived as being very similar. So we were, we were tasked with, could we pursue something a little bit more modern? Can we push this a little bit more modern and differentiate it? We have gone that path. I can't share the animation, but I can tell you that it incorporates more glass, different materials, not a rounded quarter, but a more squared corner, which is definitely a more modern detail. It is not wildly different, this is not all of a sudden a glass high rise, but it is different than I think what you are seeing in the renderings and something we can revisit as we go through this process. Couple more slides here, and then I'll wrap up, Jamal. Again, here's the perspective of the West and Ellison Street. You can note the pocket park here, that pocket park is just a place in. The next slide will show you kind of our concepts here. Again, concentration of retail and office along Broad and West, tapering down to these townhome style units along Ellison Street that's three stories. Next slide, Jamal. Here's our initial concept of the pocket park. I'll be honest, we've had two weeks to develop it. I do really like what this has brought to the table, I thought it was great feedback. I think it could be a very cool residential gateway element. It cannot be overly complicated due to the massive amount of utility crossings that occur in this intersection. But we talked about revising that pedestrian crossing, creating a grassy hanging out area with benches, with seating, and then new and improved sidewalks, certainly. You, actually, next slide here, Jamal. You do increase this connectivity, which is a huge and essential issue. The thumbnail shows kind of the current intersection, while the rendering shows kind of what could be. Improved pedestrian experience and providing connectivity to the WOD trail along Ellison Street, which we think is a massive amenity for this project, and it's a massive amenity for the neighborhood. So we we hope that this could be an improvement for the neighborhood over what is there today. One last slide, Jamal. The fiscal impact numbers that you heard today, approximately $500,000 in net annual fiscal impact. Note, this does not include the additional 5,000 square feet of office space, so I would imagine that that would increase the fiscal impact by by some measure. The revenues are, for lack of better terms, they're kind of fixed on this, the revenue side of this. If we're not contemplating resident spending, which I know, you know, some of my colleagues at other development groups have brought up, is a, an essential part of a fiscal impact, is the spending coming from a residence. Setting that aside, you know, we have played around with Becky Whitman and staff. You know, if you were to do 5,000 square feet of food and beverage versus 10,000 square feet, how does that change the model? It doesn't change it too dramatically. The reality is, and and this is, this is one of the challenges I've put before, before before staff, is that the pupil ratio assumptions that we're utilizing in these models, I think are slightly outdated. Right now, the pupil ratios are taken from all apartment communities that have been built in the last 10 to 15 years in the city. And the reality is, over the last decade, apartments have changed dramatically, and the pupil ratios associated with them have as well. We personally, and among the capital markets, would say that, you know, the true comparable communities in Falls Church are what were built most recently, being West Broad and Tanner Hill, as opposed to some of the older more condo style communities like Pearson Square. So if you utilize the pupil ratios, the most recent pupil ratios from West Broad and Tanner Hill and prior to this project, that fiscal impact jumps up to $900,000, another $400,000 in fiscal impact. I'm not saying that's the exact right thing to do, but I am saying there is a wide range that it it might be worthwhile taking under advisement to get a good grasp as to, as to what the true fiscal impact from these projects would be. And, you know, that will continue to evolve, clearly it needs to be updated with the 5,000 square feet as well. The reality is, the current site is vacant. Prior to it being vacant, I I'm not aware of the exact amount of commercial, of fiscal impact that it was generating, but I do know that $500,000 would be significantly more than what is there now or has been there very recently. Jamal, you're welcome to go to the last slide, but that essentially wraps that up. Again, I do have my design team here to ask questions. I apologize if you weren't able to see that. I will try to describe it verbally as best as I can, but I'm now open to any questions, thoughts that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Muffler, we appreciate it. So we've got different questions from different folks, for staff, for the developer, et cetera. Keeping in mind, it is 10 o'clock and and we want to get a good start, but maybe there's more to work, more work to be done. Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Could you just speak to the transportation component a little bit more, particularly the ingress and egress on the southwest street side of the building and how that would be handled, signalized, crosswalked, made pedestrian friendly as well as made as friendly as possible to the folks who live in the neighborhood?
Sure. And again, I do have Will Johnson from Wells here who can speak up on the more technical side of it. The Southwest Street entrance would be reserved strictly for residents, so that eliminates a large amount of the off hour in and out traffic that does come from your retailers. Because it is restricted to residents, there there is not contemplated to be any kind of signalization. Certainly, there would be signage in terms of stop to watch for pedestrians coming down Southwest Street, but I don't see any additional signalization there. The signalization improvements that we're speaking of are at the Broad and West intersection. Oh, it should be mentioned as well that the location of that garage entrance would be at the current curb cut for where you would enter into Rite Aid along Southwest Street. So that curb cut will plus or minus be maintained. The light at West and Broad, and Will can speak to this a little bit more, you know, in terms of the levels of service, but it's not great levels of service now, and we believe, and we discussed this with city staff at a preliminary level, is that by phasing that, essentially to allow for left turns concurrently and adjusting signal timing, that can be improved dramatically. So that's what we're speaking of in terms of the signal timing. And then from the pedestrian cross, crosswalk, you know, that would be restripped and and repaved, whether it's used a different kind of pavement or whatever to distinguish it, to allow for pedestrian crossings there at at West and Ellison. Will, is there anything else that you think is worth speaking up on in terms of along West Street, some of the improvements that we're posturing at this point in time?
Sure, just to add, and I apologize, like many others, I don't have access to the visual presentation myself. But I will point out that there are a number of curb cuts on West Street today. There's the primary one that serves the right that Joe mentioned, but there are a handful of others. We're reducing all of those to one only, so we are cleaning up the access management along West Street. And and as far as the the crosswalk at Ellison, again, we're working with staff to look at ways to 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 address pedestrian safety, to try to slow traffic down. We did do a speed study on portions of Southwest Street, and there appears to be some speeding concerns along that stretch that we think with some, you know, some safety, traffic calming improvements, you know, again, working with staff to to figure out the best, you know, menu of solutions for that location, we're continuing to to look into that. And I apologize for the record, my name is Will Johnson with Wells and Associates.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, thank you, sorry. Going back to what we talked about earlier, can you tell us how much utilities undergrounding reaches on this project? Are we going to be able to underground basically everything we're seeing pretty pictures of, even on?
Yeah, yeah, everything. It's substantial too. There, if you look at, if, you know, I have to pull the presentation back up, but that picture at the West and Ellison intersection really shows just how much utilities overground there are there. It's essentially all three sides of the site from Broad, West and Ellison, all of that would be undergrounded.
Okay, all right. And finally, the pupil ratio discussion is one I look forward to hearing more about from our boards and commissions and school board and so forth. You know, that is just real money. And to the degree that we calibrate the actual experience that we have with residential products like this to, you know, you know, the number of kids we are actually getting out of these buildings, it's just so important for the community to understand that the impact is much less than we ever imagined and much less than many people understand. And and by pricing that, by by pegging that number correctly, it gives us the ability to, you know, use the VC package in other ways that benefit the community. Affordable housing is is just one. So I do think it's a good opportunity to really look at that, so that's all for now, thanks.
All right, Ms. Hiscott?
Yes, I just had one quick question that kind of ties into Phil's comment about, so when I heard the staff presentation, I heard fiscal impact of 500, up to 500K, and then the second to last slide, Joe said 900K, and that's because of the differentiation on the pupil ratios. Am I understanding that correctly?
So yeah, Ms. Hiscott, I apologize for the confusion here. So the way that the fiscal impact is run in its current model is based on a pupil ratio that's calculated across all of these apartment communities, and then adding an artificial fifth, and so that's, that's the regular run. And then there is a conservative run where they add an artificial 50% increase to that pupil assessment, which results in it going down to about $200,000. So they're showing a net fiscal impact of $200,000 to $500,000. However, utilizing the city's pupil ratio from November 2020 at West Broad and Tanner Hill, which again, are the, especially given the size of the units that we're having, and the fact that the larger units are going to be age restricted, which schoolchildren are not allowed to be in, the pupil ratio from November 2020, that's where I came up with the approximately $900,000 for fiscal impact. So it's a wide range depending on what number you use for that pupil, that pupil expense.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I can't see who's got their hand up. I saw Mr. Lichtenhouse go by, and so I'm going to call on him next. But I'm, after that, I'm not sure, I think Ms. Hardy as well. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, appreciate it. Hey, Joe, I think speaking for those of us in the EDC, it's always refreshing and great to see tangible response in such a quick way to our feedback in that meeting, so so thank you. Specifically adding that green space, I think that's a nice touch, and I think it helps with the connectivity, not only to the neighborhood, but also the project to WOD, which is an important part as we kind of build out this, what I would say, kind of middle gateway, which I think is incredibly important. And I would ask you guys to to continue to think about ways, from a streetscape perspective, that you can connect this project to WOD, and I know that this is just one piece of the puzzle as a future development in this area of town continues over the next, you know, several decades. But just continue to think about that, and I can't give any kind of prescriptive recommendation, but just to kind of continue to think about that. I also want to say that I think the unit mix, the size, and the diversity in unit types in the residential, I think is really smart, and I think frankly that is needed. And I do want to thank you guys again also for adding. Is that office space, I was just kind of looking at the renderings, is that second floor above the garage entrance on West?
So yeah, that's, that's where you start dealing with topography, right? Essentially, all of the retail, including the office, is at one elevation. So it's at one elevation, it is above the garage, because as West comes down, you've got the coworking space in the garage on, say, Level P, and then you've got Level One being the retail in the office.
So are you, are you entering, when when you're walking off of Southwest, are you walking into the office itself? Are you walking upstairs or elevator to get to that office space?
You're walking right in off of Southwest. Now, you're going to have to walk upstairs or around through the ramp of that outdoor arcade that we talked about, where the storefront is, storefront is recessed, but you'd be getting there, you don't have to go up an elevator or inside the building and around. It's accessible right there off of West Street.
Okay, all right. And and then I'll just, one last comment. I I appreciate the updates to some of the design on the Southwest and Broad Street side. And and I was trying to follow the iteration that you went through. I I would ask you guys to to think a little bit harder to try to differentiate this product and this project and the aesthetics with the project across the road. And then finally, from a design perspective, the Ellison Street side, I think, needs a lot more work. And I'm going to steal the mayor's thunder here, because this is his central definitive word, cementitious panels on Ellison Street. It looks like you guys have got a lot of the Hardy Board material on the Ellison Street side. I frankly would like to see more masonry continued around. I know it's more expensive, but I think it's just a better look, and especially for the residents in the neighborhood side, they they deserve that, and it just gives it a greater sense of permanency. So more dynamic design on that side, more masonry. And I would say, you know, look for different kind of aesthetic, aesthetic transition from one segment to the next, so it doesn't look so monolithic. But those are my comments. So again, thank you for the changes and the responsiveness from EDC. And again, I look forward to seeing some evolution in the design and some different areas of the project.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, and we will absolutely continue to evolve the architecture at Ellison Street and everywhere else. The perspectives I think we showed don't necessarily capture a lot of the dynamism on Ellison. There is a perspective I didn't include, there is some cementitious access points. Most of that is brick masonry along Ellison, but we will take a look at this, especially if there is cementitious, and see what we can do to improve upon it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Joe, thank you. I think there is a lot to like, and I actually like the fact that I'm not going first, because a lot of other people had a lot of the similar comments. So I appreciate kind of a more ambitious, affordable housing number, and I think the responsiveness, as Ross said, on the comments we made in EDC around getting green space and adding the office and the coworking space. And neighborhood retail might be.
The 15,000 square feet of ground floor retail?
Yes, was it 10 retail and five restaurant? Is that what I remember?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'll be, I'll be completely candid, we do not have any kind of executed leases right now with with tenancy. We are creating a merchandising mix that will cater towards neighborhood serving retail. That does not mean it can't be a restaurant, it doesn't mean it can't be a coffee shop. We believe that what best serves this project and probably the the neighborhood is something like a convenience mart, or a pharmacy, or a, you know, something along those lines that can be utilized by the city. We have not postured any kind of specific use. Those uses have come from feedback from both the EDC and from meetings with neighbors in just casual conversations about people, what people want to see. We know that everyone wants to see a 7-Eleven, or not, maybe not everyone, a lot of people want to see a 7-Eleven. I can't guarantee you that a 7-Eleven will be there, like that one specific tenant. So again, the concept is to be be more neighborhood serving as opposed to saying like a Founder's Row, we're going to have 50 or 60% food and beverage heavy. At some point, I think it does become a little bit overkill on that capacity.
Got it. Yeah, I personally would vote for kind of a convenience store, I feel like people have missed that since the 7-Eleven has gone away on that side of town. Two other quick comments. One is, I think I read in the staff report, as it stands, the intersection is kind of a level of service F or E. So it's not great as is, and I know we brought it up in EDC, whether there's room to actually consider adding a turn lane, because that's where a lot of things queue up and go as far down Southwest as Madison. But as your traffic engineers dig into this, I know that that will be a consistent point of feedback from the neighborhood as they have trouble turning out onto West right now. Second comment is really around the arcade office. So I I like the idea of lots of outdoor, outdoor space, right, this is arcade, arcade retail, I mean. We actually have an example of that at the Broadway, and to be honest, it doesn't do particularly well. And so I wonder if there's lessons learned in how the Broadway executed versus what you guys want to do. But I'm a little hesitant to to love it, just because what we actually see built already not doing well. So whether you need more open air, or there's a different way of building it out, it's something I wanted to note with a word of caution.
Thank you for that. That actually came up in our, in our pre-meeting with our consultant team earlier, is that there has been less than successful retail with those kind of outdoor spaces. Not to, not to belittle any kind of other project or anything like that. I I do think if done right, that type of retail can succeed heavily, especially in the environment that we're operating today, where retail is much more indoor outdoor focused and experiential. I cannot tell you how much this is emphasized at Phase One with the retailers that we're meeting with. Ways of, I mean, you know, putting in incredibly expensive storefronts that roll up so that you can have that indoor outdoor activation, this is a much easier way of doing it, and it doesn't just have to be retail. I think there's more creative uses. Your point is well taken, I personally need to go to the Broadway and see how it was done and what lesson my team and my retail team. I think it could be a very cool feature, but your, but your point is well taken.
Great, thank you again, forward to future iterations of this.
And Vice Mayor Connolly and Mr. Snyder, I can't see your hands, whether they're up or not, either one of you. Either one of your comments?
Yeah, mine's up.
Okay.
And mine as well, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Snyder, go ahead.
You, you can go first, Madam Vice Mayor, if you, if you would like.
Mine is just quick. And that's, you know, I think four members of city council around the EDC. So many of you have seen this project already. And, uh, this is my first time seeing this project. So it's nice to see pictures and understand better what you're trying to do here. I'm wondering about the timing of this project. Um, as far as staff, when is it coming to us? When did we expect to go through this whole process? And, uh, when is Mill Creek hoping for approval? And then how's, how's the building of this project tie into the existing Founder's Row project?
I, I don't know if you want me to answer that, staff or Jeff, Gary, Paul? Do you want to jump in in terms of the process side?
I can, uh, yes, this is Gary Fuller, um, Deputy Planning Director. In terms of, uh, schedule, uh, we're, we're going to start working on one at this point. Um, we're waiting for the second submission that addresses the new primary and secondary criteria. Um, once we have that submission, um, under review, we'll, we'll develop a full schedule. Uh, because the, we'll, we'll be at a point where this can move forward. So, uh, at this point, we don't have a particular schedule. Um, there is a, a new, um, process that administratively we're looking to implement to, uh, engage board and commissions earlier in the process. Uh, that was included as attachment as a background information for you for this evening. So, yeah, any further questions, just let me know.
Are we going to be expected to approve this project before the Founder's Row one is complete?
So that, yes, so Vice Mayor Connolly, uh, just, just in terms of timing from, from our perspective. Um, I mean, clearly we're, we're in this now. Um, so we'll be a part of this and we want to get this right, but sooner the better for us, clearly. Um, the, uh, Founder's Row should be completed February or March of next year. In an ideal world, based on the way things are set up here, um, we would be, you know, getting ready to start this project around the time that one was finishing. I mean, maybe you're talking about a month or two of overlap, but not, not much at all.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps. I just, I see you to visualize how that all was going to come together. And then my, my second question just relates to your, um, the pupil estimates as well. And I would just caution you that the November 2020 pupil numbers are different than other years because of this pandemic year, it's a bit of an anomaly. So I would actually look back at 2019 to get, just compare the two and make sure you're looking at those numbers correctly. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Oh, um, thank you. Um, I will say that this project, once and for all, strips away the notion that the special exception ordinance was intended to bring about commercial development. It's not a mixed use of any kind. It's a residential development. Um, and apartments, no less. Apartments. It's not a, a type of residential that there's any real need for, considering the number of apartments that we've built and that are in the planning stage now. So that's why it's particularly important for me to know what the profit numbers are for the developer here. So I know what is it reasonable to ask for? Since it's very clear they're not giving us much commercial. Or really, the first floor, which of course no one wants to live on anyway. So it's basically the sleeves off their vest. So it's reasonable for me to ask as a decision maker, since this is a basically a hundred, very near 100% residential, what is a developer making and what is it therefore reasonable for me to demand in terms of voluntary concessions? So I will ask the developer formally tonight, will you provide your financials so that we can examine your profit level so we can determine what a reasonable level of voluntary concessions is that we should demand? Um, number one, you can either answer that question now or later, but I think that's fundamental because we're really not talking about a mixed use development here. This is a multifamily residential development coming on the heels of many other similar developments, uh, actually that had larger commercial components. Number two, the developer here, of course, is the very same developer that a couple of weeks ago demanded to be removed from their requirements for a commercial. And basically said with the movie theater gone, we're not sure about the, um, the, um, ability to perform on the other commercial that was counting on the movie theater. So I want to come back to fundamental. The big picture here is this is a multifamily residential unit. Let's be honest about that. It's not commercial development. There's not a significant amount of commercial. And I think the developer has been very honest about that tonight. So I appreciate that. So now instead of being any kind of a regional draw, now we're going to consider a 7-Eleven as a major commercial component. So I want to go back to the fundamental issue here. This is a residential development. We are allowing the developer to build residential where they are not now permitted. It's a commercially zoned area. So what's the, what are the financials so that I can determine, so that the public can determine, what is it reasonable to demand in terms of PCs? Since we're not really getting any significant commercial from this. So those are really my fundamental questions. I'd make one other comment about the process here. What is non-delegable by the city council is, are the financials. Others can comment on the design and other comments. But what we cannot and should not delegate ever to the boards and commissions is the fundamental financial aspects. All I want from the developer is a clear public disclosure of what their financials are so that we can peg what we demand in return in order to authorize them to make profit where they weren't otherwise permitted to make it as a residential developer on previously zoned commercial space. I'm the only one that works in the private sector that has nothing to do with residential development or any other kind of, of, uh, of, uh, real estate development. Um, you'll forgive me if I approach this from that standpoint, but I really want to know, what are we giving the developer the right to make on this site? And therefore we can peg what we have as citizens, as representatives of our community who are making a dramatic change in our zoning, what are we going to get in return? And I want to go back to this, this, um, the public service cost issue in a minute. And I think the Vice Mayor made a good point a minute ago. You have to be very careful what year you use. You have to very, be very careful that you take into account not just short-term trends, but the longer term, term trends as well, and the capability of our school system without significant new costs to handle significant larger numbers of pupils that may be generated. And I would note in closing, and I think I read something in some of the city documentation, that the, the net generation for this project may be as little as $200,000 a year. That would be far short of any projection we've ever made for any other, uh, development. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other, um, uh, comments that folks have? If not, I've got a few, um, that I'd like to make. First, I'd like to thank the developer. I was a strong proponent of the, um, project across the street. Um, although it was large, as some might even call it massive and encroaching into the neighborhood, I believed it brought things that our community didn't have at the time, a movie theater. You know, things that, um, would set Falls Church apart, a place where people could walk and have entertainment close at hand, unlike many other communities. And so in that circumstance, I was willing to, um, to approve, uh, or to vote for a very large project that I felt, um, did, uh, encroach in some ways on an existing residential neighborhood. For this project, I have some serious concerns and, and I'll go through them right now, um, hopefully for your benefit. One, I share the concern about the low commercial percentage. Um, to my knowledge, at, at least during my tenure and maybe before, I don't recall any project, quote, mixed-use project with such a low commercial percentage. And that bothers me. I'd like to make sure the city, for its long-term fiscal health, um, has a, a balanced tax base or a more talented, a balanced tax base with both commercial and residential. Uh, you know, hopefully at some point evening themselves out. And so, uh, this low percentage does cause me great concern. The times we have approved lower, you know, on projects on the low side percentage-wise, they were, uh, extremely fiscally accretive to the city. So a grocery store, for example, may not occupy that much area, GFA of a building, but it produces so much on a per-square-foot basis. Uh, but at least from my perspective, it made up for that. So the grocery stores, the Whole Foods, the Harris Teeters, to me, bring a lot to the table. Uh, movie theaters, I just mentioned, did as well because it was an unmet, or what I believe was an unmet need for a community. Uh, but here I don't see that. Um, at least at this point, I don't see that. And so the idea of neighborhood retail, um, doesn't do much for me. Either a dry cleaner, a pharmacy. Uh, to me, those are sort of commercial uses that we, we have in the city already. I don't believe they're particularly financially accretive as well. In other words, they don't bring in a great deal per square foot. And so they don't, uh, juice up the fiscal numbers of this project. Um, I have other concerns as well, one of which, um, I feel like we're, it's not really so much a community benefit that we're at 12%, but really it's, uh, something the community's buying in the sense like we're not getting voluntary concessions for other things that we ordinarily would get. But in fact, the city's using the money to buy ADUs. It's not really a benefit being provided by the developer. I do appreciate the amount of ADUs that are here. But again, given that we're not going to get any voluntary concessions for schools and other things, I feel like in a way it's something the city itself is, um, is purchasing. Um, I do feel the size and mass of this is too large for this site, particularly with single-family homes, uh, immediately budding and also, uh, you know, I guess a two-story shopping center immediately next door as well. So I have concerns about, um, the size and mass of this. Um, and smaller matters, the retail, uh, that was sort of, um, inset into the building, I do think is also presents problems. It's, it's presented problems elsewhere in the city of just retail that just doesn't pop out for you. And so, um, that, uh, that concerns me as well. With respect to pupil generation, um, I really think the city should be the, um, the, uh, place for those numbers, uh, come and are analyzed. I, I don't think it's really appropriate for each developer and each development to, to kind of tell us what numbers we should be using for pupil generation. Um, I would look to staff and over the long term to see what kind of numbers they believe are generated historically. But I don't think a snapshot in time does justice to the numbers we may see five years from now, 10 years from now, 30 years from now. Um, and so I do think the longer-term picture is appropriate. And I, I for one would look to staff for those numbers. So, um, I guess just in summary, I would say, to my mind, this project needs some work. Um, I, um, I have enjoyed working with this developer on Founder's Row. I look forward to the movie theater coming in across the street and that being a really exciting project. And, um, you know, I hope you can make some changes in this project across the street. But as it stands now, I do have some, uh, some serious concerns. So that's kind of my two cents. Does anyone else have any last words before we move on to our next item? All right.
I have a final question, Mayor. Sorry, I can't get my raise. Uh, I wanted staff to clarify because I know that I read in two different places in the staff report how the project meets or doesn't meet the SE criteria. And since we've modified it a couple of weeks ago, I want staff to confirm that it does currently meet the new SE that we all voted for.
This is Gary Fuller. Um, at this point, uh, we have not analyzed it on that basis. This, this review was a technical review that was done, uh, before the new code was adopted. So the, um, applicant would provide a justification and a modified application that would address the new code, and then we would review that.
So in the next session, we will have that analysis from staff?
Yeah, we, we would provide that analysis, um, in, in the next round.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any other comments, I want to thank the developer, um, for coming out tonight. And you've heard some, I think, some good comments, uh, from city council, and, uh, we look forward to further conversations with you.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
You too. Thanks. All right, let's move on to our last item, the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And I'm joined, uh, for this with Carly Aubrey, our project manager, who's managed all the, uh, land use, um, aspects of the West Falls project for the city. And, um, with the special exception site plan, uh, as the council is aware, there is a request by the developer for an additional one-third of an acre for the Phase Two office. And this has been part of their plan really for over a year now. And, um, and, uh, so what we are here to discuss is the actual, uh, land acquisition by the city from the school board that would affect that, uh, additional square footage for the Phase Two office. Uh, let me turn it over to Ms. Aubrey, who can share the more, uh, more of the details on this, and then we'll answer any questions. Uh, the, the request would be for next week for this to be referred formally to the Planning Commission for its review and of course, uh, to the, to the school board.
Mr. Shields and Ms. Aubrey, Jamal can bring up the staff report. Do you wish that?
Um, we probably don't need it.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
All right, thank you. Um, good evening, council. As Mr. Shields mentioned, the request is for the city to acquire approximately one-third of an acre of land from the school board to accommodate proposed changes in the site layout design of the West Falls Economic Development Project, specifically for the Phase Two office building. And that is shown in Attachment Three of the staff report. Um, since this involves transferring land between the school board and general government, it is being processed as a land purchase. And there is also a related lot line adjustment application currently under review. The staff report includes the roles and authorization of city council and planning commission in the purchasing or selling of land as provided for in the city charter and code of Virginia. And the staff report also includes the history and background of the subject site, including the 2019 land acquisition and conveyances between the city and the school board that were in support of the new high school site plan and the economic development project. The existing city and school board parcels total approximately 34.65 acres and is currently developed with the new high school, the existing George Mason High School, and the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. This land became part of the city through the 2013 boundary adjustment agreement with Fairfax County. Up to 30% or approximately 10.38 acres of this land can be used for any lawful purpose per the boundary adjustment agreement. The additional one-third acre for the West Falls Economic Development parcel would result in a new parcel, total acreage of approximately 9.78 acres or 28%. Staff recommends that council schedule TR 2107 for referral to the planning commission and school board at the March 22nd, 2021 regular meeting. Work sessions and hearings with these groups would happen during March and April. And a final public hearing with council is anticipated for May 10th, 2021. And, um, that's the conclusion of the staff report, and I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions, comments? All right, I'll ask one while we're waiting. Um, Mr. Shields, uh, with our neighbors, you're doing the outreach, is that right? With our neighbors, uh, uh, about this change, so everyone is informed?
Yes, indeed. That's important. And, um, our neighbors were briefed on this in a, in a meeting. I was direct outreach, uh, to them, and I'm referring to, uh, the Fairfax County staff along with supervisors of the Drainsville and the Providence districts. Um, and we have sent an email to the staff of both of those, uh, um, uh, district offices just to let them know, uh, that, you know, give them an update on the SE SP generally, but also to let them, that, let them know that this action, which we briefed them on last fall, is now, uh, up for formal consideration. Thank you.
All right. And also with respect to the schools, do we have a representative from the schools on now? Or have you had conversations that you can relay to us about any position they might have?
The, um, the schools have been aware of this for over a year. And I, I, you know, we have regular meetings, at least, uh, on a bi-weekly or, uh, every other week basis with the schools to work through infrastructure. This has not been discussed, uh, directly, I would say, probably for a couple of weeks. Uh, but they have been sent a copy of the staff report. And, um, and they are aware that it's being discussed.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Snyder, did you have your hand up briefly?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I, I generally support this. Um, is there a possibility though that the city would pay the schools for this? And doesn't this further enrich the developer? And a final question really, I want to know where we are, um, in terms of the I want to know where we are in terms of the overall economics of that project because we've basically given them about $17 million over the last several decisions that have been made, the City Council. And, and then I think we're agreeing to move the gas facility, which is another $2 million. So I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, this triggers in my mind an overall review of where we are financially on this project within the foreseeable future, say in the next five years. I don't want to talk about 50 years down the road, but in the immediate what are the financials in this project at this point? But I, I certainly like the idea of us making it possible to have an office building there. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. This may have nothing to do with, well, everything has something to do with everything. I'm just curious about how the demolition of the high school is going and that beginning part of the comprehensive agreement, is that moving along as it should be? Give us confidence to do this next part.
It is moving along apace. The, the asbestos abatement is actually happening now. And that is something that has to be done and certified before the city permit. The building official can even grant a demolition permit. In the comprehensive agreement, it, one of the performance requirements is that they get that permit before April 1st. And if they do, then they're on track. And so I think that is going well. One thing I will just let the council be aware of, and I think I've mentioned this previously, there has been some ongoing, there's apparently there's just a gap in terms of the understanding of Gilbane, in terms of the condition of the trapezoid parking lot area and the understanding of the Falls Church Gateway partnership in terms of the turnover once the building has been demolished. I think in the comprehensive agreement with the languages, it'll be turned over in a stabilized condition. And, and that is, has always been understood by me and I think frankly by the development team to mean that the building would be removed from it. And, you know, it'd be graded and, not graded in terms of final grade, but, you know, smoothed out so that it's basically just turned over, ready for construction. And then the construction of the parking lot would involve setting the final grades and setting the compaction of the soil because those are building-type activities, not demolition-type activities. There are ongoing discussions between Gilbane and Falls Church Gateway Partners just in terms of making sure that whatever gap there was in understanding is being closed. So I want the council just to be aware of that discussion. But other than that, everything is proceeding apace.
Thanks, Mr. Shields. I think that is the first time, well, it's the first time you mentioned it in my presence. Thank you for, for that update.
Probably, this is certainly the most detailed I've described it. I think I've referred generally that there's been this disagreement, but I've been more detailed in it in this one.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Shields and Ms. Aubrey for the update. We appreciate it. That's the last item on the agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to talk about before we adjourn? Any schedule or comments? All right, well, then I guess it's time to adjourn. Any last words from anyone? All right, how about we adjourn then?
Good night, all.
Good night, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.